Can y'all please stand for the pledge? We have Nyla Hall that's gonna lead us in that.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Nyla. Now we'll have the invocation from Pastor Hall. I did not mean to call you Pastor Hall, I'm sorry, Pastor Long.
Just don't forget to call me.
Long Hall.
Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to come together in your name because we're gonna say, "We're here in your name, Lord." And the fact that we enter your gates with thanksgiving and your courts with praise is what we do according to the scripture. Now, Lord, we're here to pray for our mayor and city council that they make good and godly and righteous decisions. We thank you for those who work with the city in this hall tonight, especially our city manager and city secretary and those that are seated at the table. We thank you for the law enforcement that keeps us safe. Lord, we have a lot of things to pray about in Bastrop, but most of it is thanksgiving for what you've done for our city. And we ask for your guidance by your spirit as we go forth in the days ahead. Now, Lord, we wouldn't still be a country town if we didn't pray for rain. And we're praying for rain, Lord, not just to cool us off, but because we still have agriculture and lawns here in Bastrop. But, Lord, we want to pray for a spiritual rain on our city, our county, our state, and our nation. And we ask you to do that. Now, Lord, as the decisions are made here tonight, give wisdom and knowledge and discernment and understanding to those that are here and the grace to walk out what you tell them. And, Lord, we pray for your protection. We pray for your peace, to be our guide, your joy, to be our strength. Lord, we thank you for Bastrop. I thank you that I've had the privilege to live and work and play here and pray. And, God, we thank you for the privilege to pray. And we just ask that your favor and blessings be upon our community. And for those that are working out in the heat, God, watch over them. And we just thank you for those that are here tonight. May your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Long. All right. So, we're gonna go through our reports. We're here at the mayor's report. Don't have a whole lot to report. I'll just kinda talk about my week. On Tuesday, I went out to the, what is the name? It was a glow event that Bastrop's Back to School Bash that they had at Cedar Creek High School. And I don't know the actual number of students that were able to be equipped with school supplies, but I can say the entire parking area, and that includes parking lot, grass, out on the feeder road, everywhere was jam-packed for several hours. So, thank you, BISD, for putting that together and really helping out our community. It's big for them. And there's a lot of parents and kids that walked away very happy and ready to get the school year started. And then last week was homecoming. And so, last week I explained what it was. So, I got to enjoy all of the events from the county roping on Tuesday, close friends of mine won, barrel racing Wednesday, I got to see some friends run. Thursday was the slack where all the professionals come. And Friday and Saturday was the rodeo. And we had a jam-packed house both nights. Especially Saturday night, it was standing room only. And that's what I love to see about Bastrop. And I celebrated my 25-year class reunion. And a few, several, quite a bit of us showed up, and it was real nice for us to all connect and reminisce and see that we all still have that close bond that we had growing up here in Bastrop, even though we haven't seen each other for years. So, shout out to the class of 2,000. Then Sunday, I was invited to First Baptist Church's 175th anniversary. And so, we were able to come up with a proclamation, but we didn't have an official one. So, what I'm gonna do now is reread the official proclamation with the city seal. And we have Pastor Joshua Haber. I said that correct, right? Haber, Haber, A Bear, there we go. I was trying to remember when I was talking with your dad. He held me out with it. So, we have him here. And so, how long have you been the pastor of the church? Four months. I was gonna say three, but I went, four months. So, he's fresh. And his congregation definitely embraces him. And I truly believe he's gonna lead them in the right direction. So, I will read that for you right now. So, whereas on August 3rd, 1850, Elder G.G. Baggarly of Austin formally organized the Missionary Baptist Church of Bastrop with 11 charter members, marking the birth of the First Baptist Church of Bastrop, one of the earliest Baptist congregations in Texas. And whereas from 1853 to 1863, the founding congregation shared meeting space with the local Presbyterian congregation and a Masonic Lodge, reflecting a spirit of cooperation in Bastrop's early civic life. And whereas in 1888, the congregation constructed its first standalone frame building on 908 Pecan Street, and in 1971 relocated to its current facility on Water Street after outgrowing its earlier site, now serving over 1,200 members. And whereas in 1909, the church formally adopted the name First Baptist Church of Bastrop, a name it carries proudly to this day as it continues its mission of service, worship, and community engagement. And whereas for 175 years, First Baptist Church of Bastrop has faithfully provided worship, biblical teaching, community, fellowship, youth, and children's ministries in compassionate service throughout Bastrop County. And whereas by reaching beyond its walls into local state, national, and international mission partnerships, First Baptist Church exemplifies its calling: seeking Christ, loving Christ, living Christ. And whereas, the city of Bastrop wishes to honor First Baptist Church, church's storied legacy and ongoing contribution to the spiritual vitality and civic character of our community. Now therefore, I, Ishmael Harris, Mayor of Bastrop, Texas, do hereby proclaim Sunday, August 3rd, as First Baptist Church of Bastrop Day in the city of Bastrop, Texas, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating the church's 175th anniversary and to appreciate its enduring legacy of faith, service, and leadership. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Bastrop to be affixed on the third day of August 2005. Twenty-five, thank you. All right, thank you. This is for you. You can come up here and receive it. Do we wanna take a picture with him? And so that everyone knows, August 3rd was their founding day, and so it was a blessing for them to be able to celebrate on the actual day this past Sunday. All right, we'll move on to the council members' report. We're gonna go left to right this time. So, Councilmember Fosser, do you have anything?
I mean, we got 10 minutes, so I'll do my two minutes. I'll slow roll. I can say a round of thank yous, 'cause we got to experience quite a few things since the last meeting. Thank you to Dory Kelly of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation for organizing a tour to Tesla. That was, we signed an NDA, so that's all I can say is, wow! Can I say that? Wow, okay, okay. My dreams have been, there've been robot arms in my dreams, that's all I'm gonna say. Okay, next. Neighbors Pizza, Neighbors Kitchen and Yard had a successful fundraiser for Kerr County flood relief, and that was fantastic. The silent auction, she put it together in just a matter of days, and the silent auction was fantastic. Lots of local businesses contributed. And I think they donated about 8,000 bucks, so that was, thank you, Casey at Neighbors for dreaming that up. Christmas in July, there was a lemonade crawl down Main Street. Thank you to the Main Street Advisory Board for that fun event. I think, okay, let's see if I can remember the facts. There were like 500 people RSVP'd and 700 cups were given out, something like that?
Something like that, yes.
So, there were 500 to 700 people in downtown Bastrop last Friday, sorry, two Fridays ago. And that's normally kind of a shoulder season for us when like people aren't out and about. So, not only was it super fun, it got people out into our shops. And some of the shops put the lemonade in the back of the shop, so you had to walk through the whole shop to get there. Did you know that trick? That's a good one. Let's see, we had a bridge, the bridge rehabilitation kickoff was on Saturday, and that was, I mean, thrilling to be able to walk on the bridge for a few moments. It'll be like till fall until we get to walk on it again when it's, when we do the ribbon cutting, but that was thrilling. We had our first budget meeting. The link is live, people, people, the link is live to our budget, to our proposed budget. It's on our homepage of the city of Bastrop, and it's a cool new format. You can go to the table of contents and play around. And you're welcome to give feedback because it is still proposed, but that's very exciting. Thank you to everyone who's been working so hard on that, and thank you for switching over to the new format. It's very user-friendly, appreciate that. I'll keep going. Three more, three more. I got to attend the Clean Air Coalition. It was a virtual meeting, but our annual report will be coming out soon, and I'll be sharing that with y'all. I think there were like eight different counties and municipalities who were joining that. And then 175 years, that's 175 years, you look great for 175. Well done. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Fosser. Councilmember Plunkett?
All I wanna do, of course, yeah, can't follow that. So, I just wanna congratulate Councilmember Lowe for his induction into the Bastrop High School Hall of Fame, very well deserved. And we also have a former council member that was inducted as well, Johnny Sanders. And so, I'm thinking we should do a council softball team or something, we should cut some ringers. And I do not yield back the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Councilmember Plunkett. Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland.
Ditto.
I know you have something. Ditto. All right, well, thanks for the ditto. All right, Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember Plunkett, thank you so much for reminding me of the Sports Hall of Fame. So, what that is, if you don't know, Bastrop High School has a Hall of Fame for outstanding athletes, and different ones are inducted throughout the years. And this year, it was standing room only. And quite a few, but the most special, of course, Councilmember Lowe and my brother Johnny Sanders were inducted. But I wanna give a special thank you to our city manager and her husband, Rob. Councilmember Lowe, Mayor Harris, Councilmember Plunkett, and Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland for coming and attending and feeling that hometown spirit, because there was nothing more exciting than that Sports Hall of Fame. So, besides that, the other super exciting thing was the rodeo, and you know all year, the homecoming and rodeo are probably about my special, about my special thing that goes on in this town. And it's not just the events themselves, it's the community of the people. Because whether you've been here one day or all your lives, you're part of that community, and it's so special. So, let me give a quick shout-out to all the winners of the rodeo. For breakaway, we have Kaylee Garza, bull-riding, Simran Rucker, and this is his third year in a row to get first place. Calf roping, Clint Nygaard, saddle bronc, Chris Williams, steer wrestling, Jalen Minor. Team roping is Carson Sonier and Dee Rampey. Barrelback, Justin Lewis. Barrel racing, Christie Cole. So, between Thursday and Saturday, the producer said there were more than 12,000 people up there. So, if they didn't tell you what a big event this is and how many people come from out of town, come from in-town to that, that's a huge number for this town. I'll get numbers, like money numbers, for next meeting, so you can really see the impact that that had on this town. But I just wanna thank Betty Rucker and all of her team for putting that on, and Lori Chapin and all of her team for the rodeo, the homecoming parade that went all the way down Main Street, and we were so excited, and the town was packed. So, thank everybody for that.
And Simran is her grandson.
Betty's grandson, yes. Betty Rucker's grandson, won three years in a row. I don't know if I said that or not.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Meyer. Councilmember Lowe?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody's having a wonderful day, stay cool. I'm honored and overjoyed about the induction to the Hall of Fame. I appreciate all that came out, council members, friends, family, that supported me in that and shared that moment with me and my brother, my daughter. And my brother was one of my big influences, so he shared in that particular honor with him, with me. And I'm glad he was there and my family was there, so. Thanks to the committee as well for choosing to select me, and I really appreciate that and look forward to it, and go Bears! Attended the first library board meeting as liaison, and it was a good meeting. They were very busy this past summer, and that was good to know. And I will definitely be getting with Bonnie and getting some more information so we can keep some things moving. But things are going well there now, and you'll definitely be hearing from me up here on the dais. We also held the second South End Cultural District meeting. And this meeting, we received many comments from citizens, the former steering committee. And their first meeting is next Thursday, the 14th, and they'll begin working on the boundaries for the district in this key site. So, they will also be divided into their subcommittees so that the work can keep going. So, we're definitely looking forward to that. Also, on the 7th of, was it a couple of days? I'll be hosting the Farm Street Opry, and it's the first time me doing that. So, they tagged me to do that for this time, and I'm looking forward to it and hopefully some of the council members that join me out there so we can have a good time. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. And that's the most important, is that there are boards and commissions up. So, please, look on the website, you know, you can contact City Secretary Michael, and he'll be able to get you some information if you can't find it online or anything like that, but we need people. So, definitely look at that and consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lowe. To piggyback on that, let me, I'll give you a count of what we have. Just waiting on it to pull up. It's not pulling up. What did I say? It was like, oh, here we go. It's working now. I am looking at about 12 applicants for boards and commissions. So, please, if you want to be involved, you wanna volunteer, you wanna help out, please get online and apply for a board or a commission. There are quite a bit that you can become a part of, and we can always use the help and the servitude for the city of Bastrop and the people. All right, so, on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have one item, but it's item of critical importance. This Friday, we will be closed from 1 to 5 for employee training, team building, and ethics review.
Thank you. All right. If we don't have anything for our work sessions or staff and board reports, we'll move on to citizens. Do we have anything, Michael? No?
No additional comments.
Okay, all right. So, we are on to citizen comments. I have one. And it is from Elizabeth McFarlane. She is referring to Agenda Item 9A, and she is opposed to it. So, we will document that now? Did you get her name? Okay, all right. Do I need to read out? Oh, well, I thought he was going to... Is he, are you wanting to speak for citizen comments or when the agenda item happens? You would like to speak at the agenda item? Did you sign up, right? Okay. Do you wanna speak in citizen comments or at the agenda item? So, once I move from citizen comments, then we'll call for the agenda item. And if you would like to speak then, then you can come up to speak then. Okay, so that is it for citizen comments. Thank you. All right. We don't have anything on our consent agenda items. So, we're now on to items for individual consideration. Agenda Item 9A, Consider and Act on the First Read of Ordinance Number 2025-58 to amend the City of Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 13, Utilities, Article 13.14, Wireless Transmission Facilities, Section 13.14.021, to allow wireless transmission facilities in the employment center. Place type and move to include on August 12, 2025, City Council Consent Agenda for the Second Reading.
Hello, Doc.
Hello, James Doc Cali Development Services. Thanks for meeting tonight and go over this subject. What you have before here, as you read off, we have needs, we've been working on the past year plus on identifying, there's a issue with proper cell communications, mobile communications, not just for day-to-day operations, but for emergency situations. What you have in your package, what we're proposing tonight, let me see, we have the actual, so there's different things we're looking at. In your package, this is the media that what we're talking about tonight. We have place types within the city that we allow different uses. What we're proposing tonight, is you look under Employment Center, you have these different categories. So, what you see and read is we're proposing permitting them in what we call an employment center. And I'll identify what those centers are in a minute. So, what we're proposing permitting those districts is, and you look down, and I wanna clarify, is you have P1, P2, which were the rural, open, general areas. They were permitted there already. The majority of cities, you look through this chart, you see the P3 neighborhood, P4 mixed, P5 core. You see those still aren't permitted. So, I wanna clarify, this isn't, there was some communication that we're gonna allow cell towers all over the city. The core of the city falls under that P3, P4, P5. All we're proposing tonight is allowing them in employment centers. Again, it's kinda saying the same thing I said there, are these PDDs. This map's kinda hard to read, but if you look up to the far top right, the dark gray is our existing place types of employment centers, which is the area we're looking at. The top triangle, little gray area, is that piece of property to the east of the public works yard that we're working with actually, meeting tomorrow. It's gonna be hopefully a near-future PDD mixed commercial development. The larger piece down there is a question at the P&amp;Z, part of that larger gray piece to the right, if you use a reference to rodeo arena, which is city property, and the large piece to the right, which is gonna probably be apartments and an existing development along industrial. The bottom far right gray is the industrial park, which is a city control. And the gray to the left of that up is Lover's Lane area, if you're familiar with Lover's Lane. This is where this location is actually being proposed. That's what drove this meeting and this agenda change or ordinance change is, that's where the location is proposed. The larger gray is the movie complex, which is no longer in the city. So, there's really only, with this change, four different existing areas that these could go in. Also wanna clarify, the letters that were sent out to property owners is notifying them of this ordinance change, it's not for a tower itself. If y'all approve this tonight in the second reading, they're gonna come back with an actual permit submittal for the tower, which everybody within 1,000 feet will get another notice. I really wanna clarify that for the public. This is not just gonna outright allow towers in these areas, there's still another whole process for that tower when they come in. And then, this one before P&amp;Z, did I go too far or go backwards? So, this one before P&amp;Z may not be in your package. This one before P&amp;Z on July 1st, some good discussion, and they, as a majority vote, five to one, recommend the council to approve it. I'm here for questions, and Vincent is here with more detail, just for y'all's information on the needs for the communications. So, this general information, address the concerns of towers themselves. So, any specific questions, I mean?
Councilmembers, any questions?
So, I'll introduce Vincent, I think he's the gentleman signed up.
All right. So, yes, we have Vincent Heubinger. All right. Can you, I know I said your name, but if you can just introduce yourself and let us know where you reside, please, and you have three minutes.
You bet. Vince Heubinger with Vincent Gerard, representing the landowner of the tower owner and AT&amp;T all combined, addresses 1705 Carlotta Lane, Austin, Texas. Do we have this loaded for me or no? Keep going? Okay. Okay, real quickly, James, James kind of explained what was going on. We came to the city about six months ago and looked at the ordinance and realized Employment Center was not even a permitted use for wireless. We have this tract on the long property that is in the floodplain. It's a perfect location for us, but it really wasn't a key location. We really wanted something closer to downtown. So, it's just basically an unusable tract for them, for any development, excuse me, in the floodplain area. We picked up a small portion of that for the lease and working on a site plan to submit for that. It's mixed in with a lot of trees that will shield it from...
Can you do me a favor? Can you talk just a little closer towards the mic? I know we can probably hear you, but I know at times people online kinda struggle a little bit.
Yeah, thanks for reminding me. I need to do that more often.
Thank you.
A lot of times, I just kinda blow it out, but boom.
I'm with you.
But the site plan, the site plan that we're getting ready to file shows a driveway and tower site. And one thing that you don't realize, I was talking to Councilmember Kessler earlier, AT&amp;T doesn't build their own towers anymore. Verizon does rarely, but most of these are, it's a vertical bridge, has got a contract to build this for them. And the great thing about that is that they'll market to the other carriers. They'll aggressively market, not like the old days where they had their own tower, they really didn't play well together in their own sandboxes. Now, it's really going to be marketed to the other carriers pretty heavily. General bullet points of why we recommend and support this strongly, that the notices are a good idea, but we realized this in the pre-development meeting with the city staff. One thing that we did file is a elimination report study, which actually wanted one of the Bastrop tracks to be, city tracks to be the one, but that wasn't allowed also in the zoning. Here you see what are the most important maps. That's basically where their existing sites are for AT&amp;T. You can almost triangulate between those four sites. Where they really wanted to do is closer to the city hall tract, but this is the only thing that they could find that would work. We have in-vehicle coverage all over Bastrop. That's not what we're talking about. Ironically, the mayor was downloading an app, and it was taking a long time. That's capacity. So, that little Band-Aid site that's right behind HEB, that Unipole, that's AT&amp;T, and they've clustered all their antennas inside that canister, and it's way over capacity, especially during downtown traffic, big peak, peak times, rodeo, stuff like that. You'll sit there for a minute or two and wait for something to download. One thing I read the other day, which really shocked me, but not really, the data volume now is three times as much as it was two years ago. So, that's why we're needing capacity. So that's why we're needing capacity. Bash Drop needs coverage badly. Um, I noticed that my Verizon cell had one bar in this building. May work, may not. They turn on their software and what you see, green is good, yellow is in-vehicle coverage, yes. And then no service is red. So you don't see any red, which is great. But you do see in-vehicle service or, or outdoor service only in a large area of downtown. So that's when we're, we're trying to actually cover that. And again, this is a capacity site as much as it is a gap site, so there's no red gaps. So when you turn it on, you can see all of that, almost all of that, uh, except just a little bit down, down the street, is covered now in in-building coverage. Indoor coverage is key, especially for AT&amp;T when it has first net, um, for the first responders. They're gonna install that as well. Um, and also again, marketing strongly to some of the other carriers as, as well. This is best, BTS, well, this is best server. So what it, what it's showing you, which is really not too easily, easily, easily shown, is it's picking up sectors that were previously picked up by that guy wired tower down on that side of town and the unipole right over here at HEB. So it's relieving those sites from, for a lot of traffic. It's not gonna be a real tall site. We've got photo sims made for, for James to look at. Um, you barely see it from the, uh, the expressway from 71. But it's gonna be adequate for their coverage. That's capacity I'm talking about. See the antennas on the left circle? So they mod and increase as much as they can on that tower. Antennas loaded up. They're going to four sector arrays now, which is instead of three, there's gonna be four. And once they max that out, you look at the graphs and see in the red line is basically the, the optimal usage. It's going off the charts on that. So that's where you start getting drop calls and stuff of that nature. And like Mayor was doing, slow download, slow upload speeds. Just a general RF health. It's always asked about, um, my analogy in, in these hearings is I get 10 times more non-ionizing radio waves in front of my, my, um, microwave when I'm warming up my coffee in the morning than standing right below a cell tower. So it's just always a go-to. And this is to remind everybody, we're holding a little supercomputer. They're getting better and better and better. I know I run multiple apps all the time. Um, you get your emergency services, your silver alert, stuff like that. But that's a brief. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions on how this works and typically, um, what we need to do to provide better service for Bash Drop. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Lowe?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you briefly mentioned about the iodiza, I mean, the, uh, the non.
RF energy, yeah.
Yes. Can you go into that a little bit more? Cause that's, that's really a lot of the fear that I hear. And I've been, I've been, you know, looking it up and, and just researching it and trying to find holes in it or, you know, where there's problems. But, uh, can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, I think I went backwards. Yes, sir. Uh, we get that question all the time. Um, it is actually covered, your city attorney will tell you, covered by the feds. They study and study and study and make sure that, that nothing is going on wrong about that. Uh, history of it has been around since 1913 with AM radios. So it's the same radio waves that are going, they're non-ionizing, they're not radiation. They don't break anything apart. They're just heat. So, um, standing in front of that or standing below that tower, you're getting practically nothing. No study that I've found, substantial study that is scientific that I have found has shown any evidence of any type of health issues for these sites. More? I mean, it, it's like a, a AM radio station and it's sitting there. The only thing it does, talk back instead of just broadcast to you.
Thank you. I, I, I've been getting that, you know, everywhere I look. So I just, I just wanted, you know.
We get it.
Get everybody's mind at ease.
Yes. Oh, and one more thing about 5G, which is really the big scare. I blame the industry for not educating people on what 5G is. 5G is the least powerful of the band. They're on that C-band spectrum. And they thought they could serve, they thought they could solve all the problems with these small cells that they go downtown with and stuff. I don't know if you've ever seen those, they look like light poles and they're self-support. They're not working. I mean, that the footprint of that is about a block. I mean, if, if it was needed downtown, they would do that. And we would look at that, some, some kind of a solution for downtown because the core does not allow anything. But the small cell would maybe work in that area. But 5G is less powerful than anything else, but it's quicker. It's quick. You bet.
All right. Well, I believe that is it. They don't have anything else. Thank you, Mr. Heubinger. All right, council? Say what? No, no, no. I was, I was like, all right, council, can we get some? We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Can we discuss?
Oh, wait, oh, I'm sorry. Were you, you? You was, Kevin was ready and I, that's why I'm kinda.
He was rolling.
Like I looked around, no one had a light on.
Well, I didn't have questions for him, but I have some.
Okay, okay. All right. Let's go.
Okay, thanks. Um, I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting about this topic. And there was a good point about like the parks being exempt. Could you please remind me, Doc, exactly how that motion passed? Cause it, it mostly, it passed, I know, four to one. And, um, right now, the tricky part is that our parks, some of our parks are zoned as employment centers. So is, would it be something that we would do here to like exempt the parks from this?
So basically the understanding is there's the rodeo arena, which is part owned by the city. So the city's not gonna, the, really the only thing that's in the gray area, and I'm trying to get back to the map.
Thanks, Sam.
The only thing that's actually in the gray area is actually the rodeo arena itself.
The only one, okay.
And the point is we don't see the city tearing down a rodeo arena to put a cell tower up. We are gonna come back and Viz working on, we're coming back with a category of park. What's the correct term for park? And we're gonna go back through zoning changes and identify all the parks as true parkland. So we're gonna kinda address it two-way. We're not gonna allow a cell tower in the middle of the rodeo arena. And it's not gonna meet the requirements of a cell tower to start with. And we're gonna come back as the city staff, ardness change or zoning change and identify everything that's a park within the city as true park space. So you'll see another whole color up there, it's gonna be.
Right, okay. So MAFEST is the only one affected in this moment and we will just.
Well, just as a reminder too, MAFEST, MAFEST is Emergency Operations Central Hub. So while it's a park, there is no better place for that to go cause that's where we need the most connectivity during an emergency.
Okay, so it seems to be like a non-issue right now. I just, okay, okay. Thanks.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? I'm scared. Your light's still on? All right. Rock on. Do we have any more discussion? Uh, does anyone have a motion? Oh, we have, well, I didn't know if we needed to redo it because we started. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have Councilmember Plunkett and Councilmember Meyer with the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes unanimous. We will have this on the next agenda. All right. Item 10.
Motion to adjourn.
And we have a motion and a second. All right, thank you Bash Drop for tuning in for this short meeting tonight. We love y'all, have a great night.